Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It is four thirty in today's meeting, April ninth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll have the pledge by Shannon and then followed by the prayer by Cannon. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us. Seems like turbulent times, but that's probably been the case off and on throughout history. Be with us that we do your will. Be with those who serve in safety capacities. We know we've had people who've been affected by floods and tornadoes. Those with health concerns, be with those, Father, and be with us as we try to do the best for our citizens in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, we don't have a lot on the agenda today, but we'll head and jump right in. First on the agenda is the approval of the March minutes. I know Debbie sent those out a while back. Does anybody have any alterations or changes that we need to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I've got a motion by Jay, second by Scott. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Murphy, you're next on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Council. I gave you a folder as part of my update. In the left-hand side is a summary of the public meeting that was held on March tenth related to the State Road one oh nine corridor improvement plan. And then I've given you the website if you want to look at the draft plan. We're at the stage where the steering committee is going to meet, I think, one more time. And then we'll come back to the commissioners and ask them for feedback, and then we'll be finished with the plan. Like a couple of you were there. Attendance was, uh, was strong. A hundred and forty-eight people showed up, standing room only in the Knightstown High School library. And I believe some of that attendance was generated by misinformation over the issue of annexation. And that would be the town of Knightstown annexing up the corridor, and there's no plans for that. As you may know, state statute makes annexation fairly difficult. And even if it wasn't difficult, there's just, there's no plans. Now, there is a phrase in the plan that talks about voluntary annexation. And I had an individual stakeholder come up to me after the meeting on the tenth and pointed that out to me. You said the annexation wasn't part of this, and I said, the emphasis is voluntary. The other thing I'll stress is, is this is a guidance document to help the county and the town manage growth. There's a phrase in the plan that talks about intentional growth. That, the western edge of the county is already growing. The population estimates are already showing the western edge of the county, and not just that corridor, the entire western edge of the county is growing. We need some growth. Do we need out-of-control growth? No. We need manageable growth, and that's the whole purpose of that plan. That plan also talks about zoning, but it doesn't make any changes to the zoning map. That would be done through the normal process, through a request generated by a landowner or generated through the Henry County Plan Commission with ultimate approval of the Henry County Commissioners. Once again, I'll stress that this document is a guidance document. When and if those changes occur in the future, people can look to that plan for some guidance. Do they have to do exactly what that plan says? No, they don't. We wanted to be proactive, and when I say we, this is a partnership between county government through the Redevelopment Commission and the town of Knightstown. And before we started this, about a year ago, I appeared before the Planning Commission and requested their support in going through this process. They gave it. I also appeared before the county commissioners and said, we want to do this process. Is that okay? Yes. And it's taken us a little longer than what we anticipated, but we're going to get it done and it'll be there. The reason why I'm yammering on so much is because if you weren't there on March tenth, I'm attempting to provide additional context to the project. And I spent as much time in the opening of March tenth telling people what this plan wasn't as opposed to what it is. And so I wanted to give you this information with the link. If you have feedback, we're open to it. But I specifically asked the commissioners because of their connection to the zoning map that I would be back in front of them in the near future, asking for feedback from them. On the right-hand side of your folder are two graphics. You've seen the first one, and it is Newcastle Henry County State Road three sewer and water improvement improvements. And in yellow, on the left-hand side of the document, it says, construction bids opened April seventh. Completion expected by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. This is the Ready One Infrastructure Project, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. Funding from Ready One, match coming from the County Redevelopment Commission. It improves sewer, and it also extends water to the Dubinger site. The second graphic is phase two of sewer for Dubinger. And it is in design phase, and the plans are going to be complete quarter three of two thousand and twenty-five. Not sure when we're going to go out for bid. The purpose here is to have shelf-ready sewer plans with easements already acquired for the Dubinger site. It does us no good to have ground if we don't have access to utilities. And so that's the purpose of both of these. Also, in regards to Ready One, there were four projects funded in our county for a total of one point six. Three of those projects are either done or will be done in the coming months. That's the Wilberite Trail, the Knightstown Library Accessibility Project, the project that I just talked about. The fourth project is the hundred and ninety thousand of Ready One funds towards the expansion of the YMCA for before and after-school care. Jennifer Fox and I, along with regional representatives, are in weekly communication with the YMCA in terms of being able to utilize the Ready One funds. Same timeline as your ARP funds, right? Project complete, done, spent by two thousand and twenty-six. However, in the contract between the state and the region, if there's not sufficient movement by September of twenty-five, sufficient movement as determined by the state, then that, that funding is at risk. And so I'm, I don't know what's going to happen there yet, but I just wanted to kind of throw out a breadcrumb with you all. I did a saying with the county commissioners this morning. We're going to try to, ideally, that money goes into that project, is spent, and all is good and well. But there's some timelines there that don't exactly line up with that September of twenty-five feel-good date. And so that's an update on Ready One. No new news on Ready Two. We're asking for four million dollars for projects here in Henry County. The region made that request. The state is still going through the review process. I'm not sure what's taking so long. I still expect approval, but there is no guarantee. Those two projects were residential development. So on Washington Street and on ground behind Taco Bell. The other project is water and sewer for Memorial Park that also benefits the four-eighth center. You all graciously approved a match from Food and Beverage. Continue to appreciate that, and I hope we get to use it. I don't know if we're waiting for the General Assembly to adjourn before the approval occurs. I, I don't know. But as soon as I know, you'll know. Let's see, what else? Oh, our, our business attraction opportunities, January first of this year through, really, this week have been, they've been brisk. They've been good. Strong. Fourteen projects that we've submitted on. No, I'm sorry, fifteen projects, three site visits. So if you've heard me talk about the process, it's blind dating up front. You throw in if you match what they're looking for. Sometimes you don't hear anything at all. Sometimes you get questions, even better if you get a visit. So that's, uh, that's been good. Any questions?
For those site visits, like at the industrial park or anything specific or more general?
It all depends on the needs of the client. They tell us what they're interested in, and we respond to that request.
We still have an empty shell building.
We have an available shell building.
I guess that's a better way of putting it.
And it's doing its job. Some of those projects, we wouldn't be able to submit without that shell building.
So I'm going to circle back around to the March tenth. I was there. And I, I agree with your summation that I think it got people upset over some misinformation that started on the, the book of faith.
The interwebs?
Yeah, about annexation and some other things. And I think there is some confusion that I'm hoping, as I talk to people, I try to clear it up. This is not, if it says in the plan that over here is good for residential, does not mean anybody's going to come and put a gun to your face and make you sell your property so there can be residential. You have to agree to sell your property. I mean, nobody's going to make you do anything, but this, this is the appropriate use of whatever along this quarter, whether it's industrial, residential. And I, I hope as long as we can start, continue to have those conversations with people as they come to us, that we can explain to them that just what you said, this is controlled growth. We want controlled growth, and this is how you do controlled growth.
Yeah.
As you should say, this is what's best for this area if, if and when it comes. And if the landowner goes into an agreement with, I mean, there's so, so many hurdles that have to be jumped over before anything gets put into place. And nobody at the county or in Knightstown is going to force anybody to do anything. It's just controlled growth.
Yeah.
But I agree at that meeting, it was contentious at best. But I think that people were worried with a lot of misinformation that they, and everybody has their right to, if they don't want growth or they don't want this. Everybody has a right to say what they don't want or what they do want. That has nothing to do with it, but I think a, a lot of it was just concern without the adequate amount of information is, is how I took it. So.
Thank you.
And you did, you did a very good job getting the information out that night.
Thank you.
Are you willing to follow up on your legislative comments and updates as it affects primarily RDC, TIFs, economic development? I, you don't have to go as long. Hopefully, some individuals up here listened to the commissioners meeting. I, I thought it was well-stated. Because I'm going to have an update from this afternoon's hour-long hearing that I, which, well, I add a footnote to whatever you share, but it is going to adversely affect us, I'm pretty sure.
So yeah, thank you for that question, I think. I don't want to pay any more taxes than anybody else. But there's also, you know, a cost of providing services, quality services, reasonable services. And, you know, that's where you all come into play in determining the budget for, for, for the county and the commissioners and the department heads and all that. From an economic development perspective, I just talked about infrastructure. If Senate Bill One passes in its current form, it's going to be very, very difficult to fund infrastructure. Depending on the, how it all shakes out, it may be impossible to fund infrastructure. You all don't have it. You, you don't have the extra funds in your operational budget. You know, if I come to you and say, auditor, I'd like a million dollars for a road in support of economic development. I know what the answer is going to be. The answer is going to be no. And so the use of tax increment finance with the support of the elected officials is a pretty efficient way to do those kind of projects. So our industrial park on the south side of town can host over twelve hundred employees. That industrial park was started in nineteen eighty-four. I was five. So over the years, through several generations of elected officials, both county council members and county commissioners and the Redevelopment Commission, in concert with our organization, we've been able to develop product sites to attract. It gets really, really hard under SB one. The other thing that SB one does, separate from the business personal property tax, right? So if the business personal property tax is phased out, it's one and a half billion dollars across the state of Indiana. I don't know what it is here, but it's significant. And so if that happens, that is a shift. That is a shift over to the other taxpayers that will drive people's rates up to the cap. And then you all have more losses because of the caps. The other thing, as it currently stands, you know, all this can change, right? We've got to go into conference committee and they'll, they'll figure it out, and the dust will settle hopefully sooner rather than later, and then they'll adjourn and go home. That, that'll be best for all of us. They're giving you the opportunity to raise income tax. The raise in the income tax will probably surpass any savings in the property taxes on the, on the homeowner's side, but won't make up the difference. So you're still going to be at a loss. I, I digress. Back to economic development. We've been working on housing projects for a number of years. Chad wishes we've been working on it longer. He's right. We've got two housing projects, the one associated with Ready, the other one associated with the Indiana Finance Authority. You all recently approved the bonds. I have grave concern, unrelated to the business personal property tax, I have grave concern if those projects can move forward. Why? Those bonds are funded by two sources and two sources only. The first source is the increment or the property taxes generated from the new homes and a developer guarantee. If the increment or the property taxes, those are synonymous terms, if it's insufficient to pay the bonds, the developer has to pay them. If I'm the developer and I look at the, I look at the bond estimate and the bond is going to be upside down in year five, am I going to move forward with the project? No. Now, I'm not sure yet. Got to wait till the dust settles, the final, and then we'll have Baker Tilly run the numbers, but my gut tells me that it is going to be very difficult to complete those projects through no fault of Henry County Government, through no fault of the city of Newcastle, and through no fault of the developers. That dog won't hunt. And those bond proceeds aren't going to build the houses. They're going to build the public infrastructure that serve those houses to put a downward pressure on the price point. We haven't had substantial subdivisions built in this community in forty years. And I'm afraid it's not going to happen. Now, they'll continue to build in the Donut Counties. But every other county, say Vanderburg down in Evansville, say Fort Wayne and Allen County, say South Bend up north, they'll probably be okay. The other sixty rural counties like Henry County that desperately need housing, the data says we need housing won't work. But we'll have cheap taxes.
Well, well said. I'll have a footnote, Mr. Chairman, afterwards at the end, but well said. And I'll add the footnote later because we do have an update to everything you said.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other fun topics? A lighter topic? Thanks.
I don't see anyone here from the chamber, so Troy, I'll let you jump in here and follow that with all your wonderful news.
All right, thank you. These are the same report that I presented to the commissioners earlier today. Just on the timeline for the storms over the past ten days. April second just included the severe thunderstorms, tornado warning with rotation. No, no touchdown, no, no damage to any county structures. Beginning of April fifth, the flash flood warnings started hitting. I was contacted by dispatch on the morning of the fifth in regard to Strong, Lewisville, Spice Land Fire Departments, as well as Newcastle Henry County EMS about a mobile home park on South one oh three and five hundred South about the need for evacuating that park due to the water rising. Strong, Lewisville, Spice Land, each of those fire departments did a wonderful job in, in getting the occupants out of the structures. There were some that were reluctant to leave, but we informed them that we had a place for them to go. The Henry Township Trustee did a great job working with them, coordinating and collaborating a place for them to go. We got them back in. Our EMC got the power back on on the seventh, Monday morning, Monday afternoon, excuse me, one, one o'clock. In total, there were twelve mobile homes. Approximately eight to twelve people with their pets. So those were displaced, and then they were able to get home. We did have a couple of reports of basements collapsing here in town in Newcastle. Sandbagging operations were, was started Saturday, just shortly afternoon. Sandbagging operations, uh, were, was started, um, Saturday, uh, just shortly afternoon. Uh, it extended into Saturday, or su- excuse me, Sunday afternoon. We did have, uh, citizens come and get, uh, a total of two hundred and eighteen sandbags. Um, Braden and myself estimated that to be about, uh, eighty-five hundred, eighty-seven hundred pounds of sand. Uh, so thank you, Braden, uh, for supplying those, uh, that sand for those, uh, citizens. The, um, hyper reach, uh, that you all have probably hopefully signed up for, but at least you've heard from us about. Um, sent a total of, uh, fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven messages from, uh, the fourth through the seventh. Uh, so that included all the severe thunderstorms, the tornado warning, um, the flood warning. As well as the dense fog advisory, uh, Monday morning on the seventh. So, um, that all total again fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven messages. Eleven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven of those were for the tornado warning. So, uh, that system is working really very nicely. Any questions about that report?
Thank you very much, Troy, appreciate all you do to help keep everybody safe.
Yeah, Debbie, this is the same, so fairly, thank you.
Okay, Justin, do extension.
Since this quote is made out to Purdue University, are you seeking a low interest loan from Purdue? So does that mean you got a large business discount, you think? I mean, that's possible that they have a, a corporate discount or a university discount, maybe they gave you their lowest price because of it.
Darn. So I, I noticed the date on this is back in November, and obviously the world has changed a lot in that timeframe. This, this is still a good, solid number.
Have you checked with our, uh, uh, Jeff Lutz? Our, uh, technology guru in the county, is this all gonna be compatible? I see you've got a network scan and connect, everything is going to. Work operationally with everything that's needed, everything compatible with what needs to be.
As an IT person, this should be no problems connecting, connecting to our network. I could connect it in a dental office and not be any problem. Uh, this, as long as there's a network connection, there should not be any problem at all for this to work.
And there's respect for the type of quantity that you have recently used as far as like pages per month. This is a higher end, higher capacity than what you currently have? I guess, what, uh, what fund would this most likely be able to come out of? I was asking Debbie, what fund would be the most reasonable for this to come out of, cause I know an office has to have a reliable printer. Okay, we have a pretty good balance, as I recall a few weeks ago, so. I, an office has to have a reliable printer.
So my, my, the only fund I would know of that would, we would have available right now would be council's reclassification fund. And I have a report that was sent to me, hang on just a second, I'll stall while I find it, cause it was a number. Um, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars, fifty-nine cents was the current balance available in that fund. That was back on the twenty-seventh of March, as that, so it may have possibly changed since then, but I don't know of anything else that came out of that.
I would make a motion to approve this out of the council's reclassification fund, given that balance.
I will second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this printer out of the reclassification fund, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, thank you, Justin, appreciate it. Okay, the next on the list is the PACE report that I sent out to everyone, uh, from the sheriff's department. Uh, I see Josh is here for that, so.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, so this is a report, um, it's a federal equitable sharing program. Uh, let me share what that is first, so everyone has a good understanding. The federal equitable sharing program allows local law enforcement to partner with federal government in asset forfeiture cases. Typically involving drug money, vehicles, other property seized during those investigations. So we partner with the feds, um, the federal government handles the asset forfeiture process. Uh, up to eighty percent of the proceeds can be returned to the local agency. Funds must be used strictly for law enforcement purposes, such as training, equipment, things like that. And agencies must submit an annual agreement and report to remain eligible. And this program helps return valuable resources to the community without relying on taxpayer dollars. So. The, uh, as you referred to the PACE report, um, proactive criminal enforcement, uh, under Sheriff Corkle's administration. We had a deputy assigned to, uh, basically work the interstate and look for, uh, criminal activity. Uh, we partnered with other agencies throughout the years, uh, most recently Hancock County. Um, and the PACE team was very successful, um, seizing a lot of assets, a lot of money. When Sheriff Sproles took over, uh, we brought that officer back to, uh, patrol, that spot back for patrol. Um, cause we felt like we needed, uh, more manpower on the road. So here, here we are, a- as, as I stated, this report is supposed to be filled out annually. So, uh, PACE ended at the end of twenty twenty-two, so in twenty-three, we were supposed to fill out a, a report and send it in. We didn't do that, uh, we're trying to, you know, at that point, keep our head o- over, you know, try not to drown, basically. Uh, learning a lot of things, uh, I know Anne at one point broke her hip and it just threw us all out of whack. So here we are, we actually have not, it's not really been on our radar so much because we're not. Uh, really participating, uh, since PACE is no longer a thing. But, but we do, there, there are funds still there, I believe, in the neighborhood of seven thousand, I think, Debbie, is that right? Just north of there, um, those assets are kind of frozen there because we haven't, uh. Sent in the reports, so my understanding is, uh, we have to complete one report in order to fill out another one, in order to fill out another one. So we can get caught up and hopefully get those funds available again. So I'm here today asking, I, I know, um. Uh, we're asking for the council president's signature on this, uh, agreement and certification. Basically lays out, you know, what money was seized in cooperation with the Department of Justice or. Uh, Department of Treasury, whoever we were working with, and then what was spent, in a nutshell, that's what that is. Um, so we just need to get this submitted, but it requires a signature from, um, from both the sheriff and, uh, the council. President, one signature there. And once we get this completed, submitted, then we'll start working on the following year and then the following year after that. So that's, that's all I'm requesting, just, uh, if the council president could, whatever you gotta do to sign that. And, uh, so we can get this submitted and get back in line with where we need to be.
I'd make a motion that we, uh, have our council president Chad sign that, uh, so that they can progress through the documentation.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion or questions for Josh about?
Yeah, if for some reason this is red flagged by some, uh, audit, so is it only Chad whose, uh, salary will be garnished?
What was that again?
There's not much to take, but they can, he said it's since I, I'm the only signature on it, I get, I'm the one that gets to come back after.
Oh, yes, that is correct. Forward.
Okay, any other questions or comments from anyone in the council? All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, thank you, Josh, I appreciate it. Okay, next, um, we have the update of from the finance committee meeting, um, I'm gonna let Kenan and Shannon do most of the chatting, but we. We basically covered kind of several different topics, um, you know, and different departments spoke, you know, the highway department, the health department, and the EMS all spoke. Um, so I will let you guys ju- and then jump in wherever I need.
I'll let Shannon go first, and then I'll add a few comments.
I brought my notes, um, we started with the highway department, uh, we talked about the three road closures and, uh. Uh, culverts, uh, on order or close to being on order, providers are short on rebar. Uh, basically the, hope that those three road closures will be reopened by fall. We talked about the state changes to, uh, gas taxes, we talked about, uh, redu- reductions or possible reductions in community crossing funding. Uh, we discussed cumulative bridge fund and how its balance has been, uh, lower than some of our comparable counties. And then we also noted that we don't know exactly what they spend either. One of the questions that still is outstanding is can we, should we bond to be able to fund road repairs for these small structures, that list of. Twenty structures that were provided to us in the past. Uh, the health department, um, Angela spoke up, talked about reductions in funding to the Health First Indiana Fund that have been proposed. That, uh, hundred and fifty million dollar fund has been, uh, targeted to lose about a third of its funding. And the results will be that the twenty twenty-six budget will have to be prepared, assuming. Uh, roughly half of the revenue that they received in twenty twenty-five. And that means we will or most likely lose staff because staff is funded by that, that, uh, Health First Indiana Fund. Um, so staff and services will have to be reduced. Uh, the last part of the discussion was EMS, and, uh, there was a lot of that discussion that. I think kinda. Spoke outside of the fiscal terms, even though we tried to keep it that way, but, um. The Henry County EMS staff were here and had some concerns that they voiced. Um, we talked about, they are now ALS certified. Uh, they wanna be part of the conversation, Middletown EMS reached out to us and was. Concerned about not being part of the conversation and also about EMS Lit. Uh, the city request was nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six, but it could be reduced back to about six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, one of the questions we asked is what are we required to provide? And countywide BLS nine-one-one response is what we are legally required to provide. But is that adequate for our residents? And, uh, what would we like to provide? How do we provide it, can we afford it, is the questions that kinda remained unanswered. And those are the end of my notes, so go ahead, Kenan.
Kudos, those were outstanding. Kudos, those were outstanding notes, Shannon. I did listen to the commissioners meeting and I know Joe Copeland and Braden gave updates. They also opened up some bids. I think they're doing everything possible, given the limitations, both financially and supply wise for the rebar and the culverts. I think they're chipping away and we're gonna see those, those roads opened as soon as they can get the materials in. From what I listened, it looked like July is a possible beginning of that work by no fault of their own, other than the usual. Where are we going to fund the, the extra expenses that may not have been calculated in the past? Health Department, for me, following along with what's going on in the legislature. Last I heard, that probably holds about the hundred and fifty million on the Health First going to a hundred million. That's the last I heard, but like Corey alluded to, this is not over yet. A lot of what I heard today at the hearings, which I'll address after this topic today, they are awaiting revenue projections for the biennium. And they're all talking as if it's going to go far less than what they've had the last few years. So they're kind of planning and legislating accordingly, but some of this won't come out in the wash until they get, most likely next week, the biennium revenue forecast, which will affect highways, health, the EMS. The thing that stood out in my mind that we talked about, at least the request from Newcastle had gone down about one third from what we originally were told. But somehow, even if that is what is finally agreed upon, we're gonna have to find out how to fund that. I mean, we don't have an extra two thirds of a million dollars to throw at something, we're gonna have to figure that out to do what's best. And I don't think anyone leaving that, that meeting that we had thought that doing the legal bare minimum was probably satisfactory for our citizens, so it's, that part does kind of come back to us, how are we going to figure this out? Because one possible solution is looking at LITs. And I can tell you, the legislature is pushing for counties to look at LITs because a lot of counties have not done what we did last year. We did it and we're still gonna be penalized for making the the increases to be able to, to fund the things that we did. I know Shannon didn't mention the fire departments because we didn't mention that a lot in our meeting that we had, but there's been a meeting since, I'm gonna turn it over to back to Shannon because there was a meeting that's affecting the wanting to modify what we did and Debbie has an update also from, I think, DLGF relating to the fire department that she sent out to us, so one or both of those can update. I think it's relative because it relates to the things that we've been talking about heading into the budget hearings.
The discussion that was held with the volunteer fire departments and the township trustees gave us an opportunity to look at how two other counties have done what, what we attempted to do last year. And that was raise their public safety lit by the point oh five percent. And then they decided to just give an equal amount to every department in the, in the county. And the folks present really kind of liked that idea. We had some other discussions about how those were paid out and whether or not they could be made recurring every year. And I have sent requests to Joel to actually have a an ordinance drafted that we, the tax council could consider that would accomplish those two things for 2026 or those three things for 2026. So more to come from Joel once he's investigated the recurrence and has a, has an ordinance for us to look at. And Debbie, if you have an update from DLGF you want to give, go ahead.
DLGF just called yesterday and said that they were going to give us our request to reallocate the funds like we had asked. We should know something more by the end of the week or the first of next week as to how it will be. They didn't see that any volunteer fire department had been overpaid for the year amount, so we'll probably just make one big adjustment in May.
And were they paid the next payment last week or no?
They were paid on the third, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Third or fourth, I don't remember which day it was, but yeah.
So I want to thank Jeff Beal. Jeff Beal is the one that dug into, and I don't know how long he start, ago he started digging into it. But it was a month or so ago that Jeff Beal located the ordinances from Fayette County and Rush County that they had done theirs evenly distributed across all the townships or all the fire departments. So thank you, Jeff, for being diligent and doing the research. And, and the other thing I want to add, I was also at that meeting, is the Henry Township is also willing to just be a part of the division and not get any additional. They said that they would, whatever it was divided, to include them in that same, instead of them getting the additional hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They are on board with being a part of that equal division of the funds.
Okay, I just have a couple other things, you guys all did a great job giving your feedback and then response, but as far as the, the Health Department, like Angela spoke, she is being very proactive and already looking through her numbers. Several, you know, these positions that Shannon mentioned are positions that were informed going in. This is grant funded positions and they, they are based on the grants. The other thing Angela brought up, which I know was a discussion in the budget session last year, was changing the structure of the Health Department tax allotment. That obviously will have to be looked at when we go to budget structure again this year because if she's losing all of this huge chunk from the Health First funds, we are probably not going to be able to restructure those numbers like we had potentially thought as be a possibility. The other number I wanted to throw out, and Brian is here, he could confirm this, but Steve Dillinger, Commissioner Dillinger, said that the number that these now coming from Newcastle is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the estimated number, which comes down a great deal from the nine hundred and change that we started, but it's still more than double what we're currently paying and have been our budget. So like Kenan said, it's definitely something we're gonna have to get into and dig deep to see where we try to come up with that, because there's not, there's no ex, there's, the budget we have has zero unappropriated dollars right now. So it's not like we have an extra spot for that. Speaking of extra spots, one other thing we did cover was the balances in some of the funds that we have. And in addition to the reclassification, which we've already mentioned, we do have the rainy day fund, which is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars currently in the rainy day fund. And as of, these are all as of March twenty-seventh. And I know everybody on the council gets these when they get the budgetary statuses, but I asked the auditor's office to pull these for us. I don't know, I don't think we got one this month, but I know that I asked before our meeting so we would have the fresh numbers. So, but as if our general fund or unappropriated general, our general fund balance as of right now is seven million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-eight cents, which is a very solid spot. But one thing that we discussed in the meeting is we can't use our, which is our savings account, if you will, we can't use our savings account to pay the electric bill. We can use our savings account to buy printers or make one-time purchases, but you can't pay payroll and pay bills out of the savings account because it won't last for a certain amount of time and it won't be long enough. So that's why we tried to be preemptive and, and discussing some of these things for our budget session, because I think it's going to be very interesting this year. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to when this dust settles and hope everybody goes home sooner than later, like Corey said. And then Baker Tilly sends us a full analysis of what really came out of Indianapolis this year, so. But again, I appreciate it, anyone have any questions? Okay, if not, Kenan, you can share more good news with us about what you're, what you got from the meeting today.
Before, before Kenan starts, Mike's gonna be late for his own birthday party, so we gotta let him go.
Oh, well, happy birthday, Mike.
Happy birthday, happy retirement.
I wouldn't leave, but I've got, my kids are here out of state, so I gotta get going.
Happy birthday.
Sounds like an excused reason.
Twenty-nine and, and holding.
Thank you, do have a happy birthday. To kind of dovetail on what Corey was saying, there was a hearing of the House, different amendments today, second hearing. And a few cases, third hearing, which means they would then go over to be ironed out in the, in the Senate chamber. There was feedback by Representative Thompson, who heads Ways and Means in the House side. Senator Houston came over from the Senate Majority Leader. The Minority Leader Delaney had provided his insights into this. In the final analysis, this Amendment Thirty-Six that I, AIC and ICCA, the Indiana County Council Association, sent out an alert to this afternoon, this morning. I forwarded that on to you, they had deep concerns, especially with the business personal property tax that was embedded in the brand new Amendment Thirty-Six that was defeated today. There were so many questions and concerns, and I think primarily a lot of citizens.
I need to interrupt you, it, Amendment Thirty-Six passed.
Yeah, it passed.
It did.
It did, yes, it did.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, I had a little glitch and something stopped and I saw the roll call and I got back in and it said, maybe it was the amendment right after that, I'm sorry.
It's my understanding that all other amendments failed, but Senate, Amendment Thirty-Six passed.
Well, thank you. It must have been during that glitch where I had about a minute that it, that took the roll call vote. Well, here's what's in it, and this is what we've got to face, there's a significant reduction in business personal property tax, which will affect the TIFs. It'll affect our ability to bond that Corey was alluding to. The analysis shows it's gonna adversely affect smaller and rural communities, more than larger communities, which would include Henry County. The bill continues to remove a thirty percent floor on new business personal property tax installations beginning January first of this year. The Senate changed Bron's, what would have been a two billion dollar loss for the state to the local units of government would have gone down considerably, the House ramped it back up. And part of this Thirty-Six, according to what I've been reading, is less harmful to our revenues than what the Forty-Six was that they passed in Ways and Means on, on Monday. New homeowner tax credit increase from two hundred dollars to three hundred dollars this week, which reduces all revenues to locals. The House acquiesced and favored businesses over local units of government, which is part of the Governor Bron's intention, I believe. There are bills and amendments to limit our one school corporation to one, Prescott is trying to basically dismantle the Union School Corporation in Modoc, which got pushed back in the hearings today because there were no public hearings on that at the local level. Let's see, there are bills and amendments to limit one school corporation in all counties with a less, a population fewer than fifty thousand. That would mean if that were to pass, which I'm doubtful and hopeful it doesn't, Henry County would have to have one school corporation. As of last week, that was still valid. I think that will fail. So at any rate, that's some of the things that the legislature is looking at. Amendment Thirty-Six today, two thirds, what they were touting today is two thirds of homeowners would see a property tax decrease or savings in 2026. There'll be one point four billion dollar homeowner savings over the next three years is what they're touting, and that is in the amendment that apparently passed today that will affect us. Thompson, who heads up the House Ways and Means Committee, asserts that the rate of growth to locals will increase. In other words, he says, we will get more money than we did in 2025. And he goes on to say, they'll probably, locals will get ten times the amount of new monies than what the state is going to forecast next week. They don't know that yet, but they're, they're saying that we will actually get more money. But we'll get less than we would have gotten if no laws have been changed and no amendments have been passed this year. Some of this was not set in concrete until they get the biennium revenue forecast, which usually comes in the third week of April, which will be next week, and it's just a few days before the long session is scheduled to adjourn. Let's see.
Kenan?
Yes.
Everything except Thirty-Six failed. Every other amendment failed except for Amendment Thirty-Six.
Thank you, and I, I'm sorry that I had a glitch and things stopped right when the boat because the boat that I saw was immediately came back on was, it failed two thirds and it must have been another amendment. But thank you for that update. Senator Houston came over, he heads up the Republican Senate Chamber. And he, one of the things they pointed out is the person, business personal property tax originally in the bill was gonna move up, the exemption was gonna move from eighty thousand to a hundred and sixty thousand, which AIC said was gonna really hurt local units of government. It's gone up to a million dollars. The exemption has gone up to a million dollars, not a hundred and sixty, not doubled, it goes up to, then it's taxable a hundred percent after the million. And his comment was, well, locals have actually lost more monies by giving abatements to businesses than what he calculates that this change in the business personal property tax. That was his comment, that we've done it to ourselves through business abatements, as if we're not supposed to try to lure in and incentivize new businesses to locate in our community. Thompson asserts that provisions will scale back our locals' ability to bond. He said that according to their data, the debt that's been incurred and increased in county level by going to bonding has increased dramatically post-COVID. And they're going to put the brakes on that, so expect our, maybe our limits to bond to decrease. They don't speak favorably of public schools, they're gonna be hurt the worst. They don't apparently think that the local cities and towns are doing a good job with the taxpayers' money. Their comment was, it seems, some of the testimony that they've seen growth in local debt during bonds, asserting, certain local, locals have increased debt and taken away the potential of other units within, like, for example, within the county, that it's a game of who wins, of winners and losers, losers. But he did assert that small business will benefit more than larger, like US Steel, Gary, for example, through the tweakings that are in the Amendment Thirty-Six that was passed today. Thompson asserts if the business personal property tax exemption that's in Amendment Thirty-Six, if it affects existing bonds that the, it doesn't kick in, that's yet to be seen. But he said if they do an analysis, I don't know if it's DLGF, but if it affects existing bonds that we have, the provisions in Amendment Thirty-Six will not kick in. I hope that's true, but according to what Corey said, if it does kick in, it could be devastating. For example, the housing project that we have on the table through the RDC using TIF. If that's false, those may cease to exist. And finally, just a reminder of the ASC District Meeting and shall be due on May eighth, I think there's at least four council members and signed up for that. And I have Kiwanis breakfast pancake tickets and so does Bobby.
Asterix. So I will only add and say that while I think the everyday citizen and their residents is gonna see a minimal change from everything you've said.
Two hundred dollars is the estimate.
It's going to be the, the small and large, what I would consider large, I don't know that we have any, and we'd have to check with Jody. I'm not sure that we have a personal property tax of more than a million dollars in Henry County, that's a big number for Henry County. If we do, it's, it's literally a handful. And so it's all of those businesses in between that they're going to be the big winners in this, those eighty thousand. And so it's all of those businesses in between that they're going to be the big winners in this, those eighty thousand. Jumping from eighty thousand to a million dollars is a big difference. That's a big number. So, um, yeah, I bet the, the, obviously the big losers are all those taxing districts that are going to see massive changes. And then, you know, through our extremely lean times, this county has more debt than most in our, I think, all in our class size actually comparable. We, I'm not sure how we wouldn't have survived without the bonds. We've been able to do that. Well, I mean, I know the commissioners are currently working on this building from bonds to renovate this, you know, and up, you just do basic repairs. And all the purchases we've made over the past several years from election equipment to everything else that's been a need that we've utilized bonds to have because we didn't have cash sitting in, in the bank. So it's gonna be interesting. It's gonna be very interesting. Thank you. Anyone have anything else they'd like to say or questions for Kenan? Or just anything in general from a council perspective? Okay, any members of the public or the other department heads have anything else to add? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.